Well, I just wanted to just walk around the way I prefer, but I just want to thank you for having me here today. It's been a honor to serve District 3 since June, and I'm excited to be running again. You know, there's a lot of work that's here, beyond here in Sarasota County, a lot of it that I've already mentioned here earlier. So I'm going to give you a little bit of background about me for those of you that don't know me. Originally, grew up in just outside of Boston, Massachusetts, in this suburban town. Moved here to go to Florida State in '06 and studied with an emphasis on urban and regional planning, something that our county needs in a major way, we need some planning. So if you've heard of these streets or the interstate, you've been in a parking lot, almost forget it nowadays. So our county needs tremendous planning, but first and foremost, as any public servant, you need public safety as well. So back up a little bit about me. So I used to come down here fishing. I'd go to Venice, I'd go to Placeta, go fishing. This is the greatest place in the world to live. That's why most of us are here. So when I graduated in '09, I said, "Well, where am I going to go?" And it was natural to come here because you can fish and work. So I've been fortunate to be able to stay here. My wife, she was born and raised here, and she's worked for a family-owned company. I do as well, the benefit in sort of 45 years. Work for a mini manufacturer that employs about 240 employees here in Sarasota County. We're the sixth-largest manufacturer. So it's super important to me. I know Terry mentioned that I have a son. He's 22-years-old. He's an auto mechanic, and he works on Ferrari, Bentley's, and Lamborghini's. But the best part about that is he went to trade school. He went to Sarasota Military Academy, did the dual enrollment in Santos Technical School. And we need to push our kids to those technical schools because whether you're a plumber, electrician, a mechanic, those are high-wage jobs that allow you to stay here in Sarasota County because obviously the cost of living is not significantly. So female workers blessed that he gets to be here. And that's one of the reasons I'm running because we got to solidify that future for him. We got to solidify your grandsons, your grandkids. And this is an exciting time. Full challenge. Nobody expected the growth that we had over the last three years. Obviously, the rest of the country was shut down. Governor DeSantis kept Florida open, and we were able to enjoy the benefits of that. Bad part about that is 30 years ago probably happened in three years' time. Look at the apartments on Jack Veranda going up. Nobody's excited about those. They weren't approved over 20 years ago. So please don't point the finger at me for those. But these are real challenges because we got to create high-wage jobs that allow our kids and grandkids to be here. And then public safety. Sheriff Hoffman, who's endorsed me, is going to speak afterwards. But one of the first priorities I had was to get it with our sheriff and to see what it is we need to be doing to make our system more robust. One of the things that we just did is we reopened the South County Sheriff's Office on 776 that was previously closed down. And I think I'll speak to the staff on that, but it seemed tremendous. The South County, a soft and then forgotten, and that ends now. So we reopened that. You should have the same level of service as anyone else in this town. And I want to fight for that. We're fighting for that. We've just got $200 million for Brazilian. That's our queue. And a lot of that's going to go to infrastructure. $15 million of it's going to go to career and trades because we need the nurses, not just the plumbers and electricians. There's mobile hospitals being built here in town. And those are super important to us to make sure that we have the best healthcare in the country right here in Sarasota. So I just want to back up because some of these things were addressed, and I'm going to give a little bit of a promo. Terry just talked about faith. So I don't know who here noticed about the revival going on at Menace Airport here on April 5th and 6th. Awesome. So I encourage you to look that up. Global revival now with some awesome programs going to happen. You also mentioned abortion in some of the previous speakers. Sarasota medical pregnancy and with the families when they're going through that time and need to make sure they protect that baby. So I hope I see you there. Back to work, we're definitely a club and forum. I do want to address a couple other things. So we have to make sure that we're growing smarter. We have to make sure we're putting infrastructure first. We have to make sure that we have other north-southern. And one of the things that we're going to prioritize is the rain road. Right now, it's coming down from Pruville. It's going to connect to Nines Forever. We got to get that open because if you go on the interstate any day of the week, it's shut down. The other thing is water quality. Water quality. So Bee Ridge Advanced Wastewater Freedom Facility is being built currently. The next one's going to be the Venice Gardens Facility and then Central Venice. So that is going to help protect our water quality. Another thing with water quality that's... I think I haven't heard anyone opposed to it. Who here is for opening Midnight Pass? I think we just heard from another girl here, and her son is spearheading that. And we had a 5-0 vote as the county commissioner reopened Midnight Pass. And that's really a historical title connection that needs to be opened to make sure that our little Sarasota Bay is the highest water quality that we can have. The North Bay responded after we had the horrific Red Tide and sea grass that started to grow. So some of the things that make me different. I heard a lot of discussion about the hospital. So the hospital, there's only one candidate that they're supporting, and that's Tom Knight. So they have given him money, the CEO of the hospital. The board of the county commission voted for the medical freedom resolution. And we need to keep pushing that along to make sure that the tragedies that happened at the hospital never happen again. The other thing is the foundation's got really behind. I don't know if you guys have all the American Library Association. I think many of you have even spoken before us. But we defunded that as a county commission. You know, it was only $1,300, but 500 people showed up to speak on that. And you know what? There was someone in the audience there that was making the phone calls, making sure more people come. That fellow supported Tom Knight as well. And we got to look at where this money's coming from. His largest donor donated over $4 million to Planned Parenthood. So these are issues that I have that should be raised and questioned. And he did a great job as a sheriff. I'm not questioning him at all, but it's a different position. We need planning. We need to be fighting against the woke in America that has come into our neighborhood because we are a poor town. We are a town that has to fight for our kids just like the COVID-19 affects all of us. So we got to make sure that that isn't coming to our town. And then taxes. So we got the second lowest village rate in the state of Florida per county. Problem is, our property values went up, and our growth went up significantly. So we got to look at a way that makes sure that growth is paying for our infrastructure. It can't be on the burdens of our backs that aren't invested here to pay for the growth that's coming. And it's not like the border shut down at the Georgia line and that there's not more growth coming. There's still a lot of growth coming. Most of Venice, the Comas in Norfolk, which is in District 3, is already plotted. There's already decisions that are made in terms of the entitlements on the property. So if you see a vacant piece of land, chances are it's already been approved for something. So we have to make sure that if that's going to be built out, that we put the infrastructure, the roads, and sewer and water in ahead of time because you don't want to dig up the road, put in the water and sewer. We just see too much of that happening in our community. So anyways, I just thank you for this opportunity to speak before you. I really enjoy serving you on the county commission. I have four of the great commissioners. I've served with a board that's getting the work done. And I'd be excited to have your vote to represent or hopefully not for the next four or the next eight years.
Tell my experience about it.
I think a $10 donation is a major donation. It comes from the head. You want to know who my largest donors? Is that...? So my... Well, I think your $10 is major, so certainly. But my largest donor is Fenderson, and his largest donor is Palmer Ridge. They're both developers. Yeah, he can keep counting, he gets twice as much money. Sorry, they did a good job. Oh, sorry.
Thank you for coming, Neil. I would like to put in a plea for the county fairgrounds. There is talk of selling it again, and it needs to be for public use. So please don't destroy the county fair. We start on Friday.
Yeah, I'm going to be there. I'm excited for that. One of the things that we have to do as a county is make that 4H a better program, a year-round program. Obviously, everyone comes to the fairgrounds, but a couple of months ago, I asked the county to research how we can make it more permanent in terms of 4H. Because when 4H, if we can make it to the east like out of the rain, then you have the whole north-southern quarter that can go there after school and use the facility. Right now, the sheriff has an agricultural unit there at Dexter. If we could have a permanent place for stable for kids to learn agriculture, that's important to me. The other thing we need to do as a commission in terms of that is there's a lot of conservation easements on major ranges currently. But one of the things we need to do is for the 2026 referendum, we need to shore that up. Because what's happening now is if anything goes under conservation easement, that property, the only thing it can have on it is cattle for the most part. So if somebody's growing oranges and wants to switch to tomatoes because the orange tree is now... They can't do that. We need to protect that. We need to protect agriculture on those conservation easements so that they can farm it forever. Because if you get a large donor, DeSantis shut down the Chinese from investing in Florida. But if you get a large, like a Bill Gates or someone like that, that comes in and buys farming and makes it use so you can't do any ag... That's a big problem. So we got to make sure that we shore that up and make sure you can farm it longer.
I was looking for the opportunity to ask you this question before. How much is it? My question is, how do you feel about men who use vulgarities in front of others and insult them? How do you feel about that? You were present when Jack Verio insulted me with vulgarities and you didn't step forward. And this is not this issue. You're serious with me because no matter if you're like a woman or not, you respect women because every woman is a creator of nations. And we know that men are the ones who destroy the nations before. So I will ask you again, how do you stand on that issue?
Yeah, so I did not hear any vulgarity in regards to that. And out of respect, you know, I served with your son. I don't think you should go any farther.
No, but this is serious because it's not a Muslim thing about this and the other women that you've...
I will say this. If some of the men use a vulgarity to a woman, that's completely inappropriate.
Thank you.
What other committees do you represent or what other committees are you on?
Within the board, yeah. So I'm on the Board of Venice Main Street, on the Board of the Airport Authority. I've been asked to be on the Board of the United Way of South Sarasota and many others in the future. We rotate in terms of some of the ones we serve on, so certainly.
So we have to serve Jack Verio?
I resigned within a couple of days of my appointment from the governor.
Did you stand up for the same course?
I put out a statement that saying that it should go through the normal police thing. I didn't say anything beyond that. And obviously, we saw where how it turned out.
Take notice. People that I know who have supported personally DeSantis, okay? And people I like, the people who I don't like. I still like him as a governor. There's people who support Donald Trump, who I like. And there's even people who suck on the stones, who support Donald Trump. Who backs an individual, okay? Is not anywhere near as important as the quality of individuals that he brings into office. Everybody knows this guy, okay? He's a quality guy. Because maybe one or two people that you don't agree with back there doesn't eliminate anybody from being good at their jobs, okay? That's it.
Yeah, Neil, this... You mentioned about the impacts. And those are really important issues to all of us. Just on March 7, there was another revision to the code ordinances that basically puts more and more restrictions on property owners that are paying more and more in tax. And essentially, the increasing property values is basically a tax on a capital gain that's unrealized. I would like to know what the PCC can do about this increasing regulation of private property presidential property.
Yeah, no, I mean, I definitely stand with property rights. I don't think there should be additional regulations of any sort. I had a conversation with Bill First, who supported the other guy in the race. And one of the things that when I talk to people out their doors, there's a lot of roof painting replacement for Hurricane Ian. And for a while there, they were increasing the value of the home for you going to replacement roof. I called Bill First and said, "What is going on?" And he said, "We're not making this real public, or we're going to stop the practice of that." And I know that legislators just looked at it, but I mean, we... People are tapped out. Your grocery bill's twice as much as it used to be. Your auto repair's twice as much as it used to be. Every single thing costs more. And if you start off in this county, I don't even know how you do it. Because when I moved here, I tell a story a lot. In '09, and then in '10, got my first place. We got a mortgage and it was $1,600 a month. Brand-new house, $1,600 a month, 2.75% interest rate. Nowadays, that's gone. It doesn't exist anymore. You're lucky if you get the same house for $4,500 a month to have multiple roommates. So that's why one of the things... So we got to lower the... So that it's an affordable town, for sure.
This is the last question since we do have another speaker, our sheriff.
Hi, Neil, thank you for coming. I was told that the county commissioners voted not to help fund the 100th annual county fair. How did you vote on that?
I'm not familiar with a specific vote in terms of funding the county fair. The county fair is an organization that funds itself. They have raised money for a much bigger venture. The... I think the county fair part that's being discussed is whether or not that the finances of a fair are not excellent, needless to say. So they're concerned about that. There's no vote for that.
Okay, if you come after the county fairgrounds, we, the citizens of this county, are going to come after the decision.
Understood. There's only one person that shut down the fair. Almost a good one.
Thank you, thank you, Neil.
Guys, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak. Look forward to meeting you in person if I have that on my way. And thanks again for your service to this community.
Now, I'd like to introduce our next speaker, Sheriff Kurt Hoffman.
Thank you so much, Terry. Everybody's taking up my time. I have the longest topics to go over. One of our strippers just a second. Terry mentioned the legalization of marijuana. I can tell you it's catatonic. We have 35-year-long version of the bedroom. We have got to fight that. Every woman in this... I didn't have that on when I was speaking. But every one of these drugs, we just had a little bit, two overdoses this week already. Every one of these cases does not start with fentanyl or start with methamphetamine. It starts with alcohol, and it starts with marijuana in many, many cases. We still find marijuana on scene. We have drug overdoses, methamphetamine, or fentanyl-related. So we really have to fight. Did you ever think in your lifetime you would see legalization of marijuana and legalization of abortion put into the Florida constitution? Have you thought about that across the board? It sounds like you're all with me on that. Couple of quick points that I want to talk about. Terry, thank you for the introduction. Just by the way, history. I am the 11th sheriff of Sarasota County. This great agency has been in existence 102 years from a long and esteemed reputation. How many people are from... Are not from originally from the Florida industry? Come on. Okay. So you might not understand the role of sheriff in Florida. If you were in, like for me, I came from Indiana Sheriff's Department. The sheriff's office here is not a department. We're not the fire department, the public first department, garbage department. It is an independent constitutional office of sheriff. We could talk about that real quick. So this is my 35th year of law enforcement. I followed in my dad's footsteps and my brother's footsteps and my two locals. I've been a career law enforcement officer. My dad retired 42 years. I don't know if I'm going to be able to keep up with him and catch up to him in 42. But I've just been a very honorable profession that I've had the opportunity to work in. I lived down the road, up River Road in Venice. I was a resident of Englewood for a number of years down there. So I'm kind of a South County guy. I'm actually in the city of York where I live off of East River Road with the Lobe High School. Had my wife here, raised my family here. Was a chartered deputy for about seven years. And I had a really bad experience on a trial where a victim didn't get the justice that they deserve. Prosecutor did a really crappy job and didn't put any effort into it in the period. And it drove me to wanting to go to law school. And I did. I went over to the East Coast, got my law degree, came right back here to the community that I've been serving. And worked primarily right down the road here at the Venice courthouse for the years that I was with the state attorney while I was staying here. And then I had the opportunity to go to the sheriff's office in 2005 as a general counsel. And I ran as captain, major, chief deputy in 2020. And I ran to be your sheriff. A little bit about Sarasota County Sheriff's Office if you have some folks that are not originally grown here. We police approximately half a million citizens in this county. We wake up every day feeling the enormity of the responsibility of half a million, about 3.6 million visitors. I currently have 1,061 employees that admit and who work 24/7, 365 to protect this community. And as of midnight last night, I have 1,074 individuals in my care, custody, and control in the jail. So sheriff's departments up in the north, they kind of run the jail. They serve civil process. But down in Florida, they are independent constitutional officers and we are the chief one. Maybe it was the first one to clap on that issue. It's an important distinction. I wanted to... I know I've had some folks here that I spoke in front of and some that I can talk to. I want to just talk about some of the important aspects of the constitutional sheriff. First and foremost, it's protecting and preserving our constitutional rights, the freedom that James was talking about. And a lot of circumstances goes through the constitutional office of sheriff. And for those of you that are here on the previous school board that we had, those folks were dragging parents out of those school board meetings and trying to get them arrested for exercising their first amendment. And many of you called me and said, "Sheriff, I can't believe you did that." I had to go to social media and correct the record that that was not anybody who were agreeing before who was dragging parents out of there. We all know what the FBI has done with regard to weaponizing against some of these spirits. So it would not be sheriff's office. I've now been the first amendment and your first amendment rights, and I'm going to play my role in making that happen. The second one is second. I am a very pro-second amendment sheriff. I've never, 35 years, had a good guy or a good gal with a gun ever hurt me. They've always come to my feet and been able to help me. So thankfully, with Governor DeSantis supporting the legislation, we now don't have to move to our government and ask permission to be able to carry concealed weapon. And I think if you go, you confirm it. There's no excuse with the Republican legislature why we can't get open carry established. Our founders said there shall be no infringement on those rights. And that isn't infringement. And this sheriff, the sheriff of the north, the sheriff of the south, the sheriff of the east are all in agreement that open carry, we support that contrary to what the legislature is doing. You know, if you have some question, masks and all this nonsense about forcing people... Imagine you're in a position where... My wife's a nurse, a nurse for 30 years, she's now retired. But you force your nurses to put on masks and take, you know, taken in the injection. And then when you fired it, you tried to go back and hire them back. It's like the ultimate insult. And they're due to our military at the federal level, and they're due to our healthcare workers at the local level. We never made any of our employees to wear a mask. If it makes you feel better, you want to wear one. It's not going to be made by this sheriff. Can we all get couches full of meas? Another area where a constitutional officer, particularly the sheriff, can have an impact is on our previous school board. After March, we still have the... You know what happened on the East Coast? All those children were murdered over there. Terrible legislation that came after that provided some funding for a law enforcement officer in every single school. But yet print by print, it's public schools, and then we provide guardians for some of the private schools. So the private schools and the charter schools, that previous school board just stuck their nose up in the air and treated them like they were the ready-made dead children. As we know what's going on in our schools, what has gone in our schools, the parents should have a choice to be able to pull their kids out and put them wherever they want. They should have the same level of protection as our public schools. So we provided school safety deputies to any private or charter school that wanted it in Sarasota County. So they have the same protection. I'll tell you the other area where it's extremely important, particularly with what's going on right now with the game of apps and the whiteness, is cooperation or lack of cooperation with... In the United States. I've got a good friend, Sheriff Mark Daniels. Great guy. He and I do a show every couple of months on Arm America Radio. You can put ArmAmericaRadio.com. We get down on there and talk about secondary mission, war mission. And I was on there with him recently, and he said, "Sir, I've got 87 miles to my county. She's coming here with them on the Mexican border, and I have 84 deputies." He goes, "I can't handle shoplifting violations at Walmart because I've got a wall of deputies on the Mexican border trying to protect my citizens." So every sheriff is a war sheriff. I feel this pain, I feel this fight, and the drugs and human trafficking that looks across there, particularly of our children, make its way into our communities for sure. In fact, in the first time in 15 years, we have a detective assigned to the DEA office directly giving him the intelligence of where the primary of fentanyl and a lot of other drugs as well are being processed on the Mexican border. And we know it's the same organization because we're fingerprinting the package and we're seeing the same fingerprints. It's not one-on-one. There is a distribution on the cartel side of that border that runs better than Amazon for sure. So we've got to do that. If you look, this is why all of this is so important with this presidential election. We can turn all of this around, get that border secure, get our community to say, "Look, we've got no crime and we're dealing with something that's self-made by the president and the vice president of this United States." They did. And that's going to get out. So hopefully, President Trump will be willing to pull the red flag for that. The other thing I want to mention here real quick, and it's not ever talked about, you know, kind of law enforcement kind of. But the other thing that Washington does that impacts me, that impacts you, and this is directly on Joe Biden's 40-year path. He refuses to crack, he refuses to drill, he refuses to, you know, work with foreign countries to be able to get oil in your case to water or something. So all of that stuff creates this, you know, financial impact on governments and on all of you as individuals. We try to have 7 million miles a year patrolling your streets. So my wife always said, "Why do you get so upset when gas prices go up 3 cents, 12 cents?" You do 7 million miles a year, the action's out of view. And that's coming from Washington and the policies of the president. So you look at my budget, it's full of commodities, ammo, guns, tasers, bulletproof vests, tires, batteries, bridges, auto boxes, tasers, uniforms, stop sticks, traffic cones, cabos, light cars, sirens, every single thing in our budget has got some connection to a commodity that is costing more than what it did two years ago, certainly more than what it did in the Trump administration by far, come back and look at those fine items, and see, for instance, cabos, $9,900 more per vehicle in the last 24 months than what we were previously paying. And when we rotate, you're paying about 10% of your fleet every year, that's a million dollars. If gas goes up 30 cents, it's a million dollars. And this is caused by Washington, it's not crime-related, and I can certainly talk about all the crime issues we have and can deal with caused by the federal government, but this is an economic war on citizens by the federal debt level. So very important that you understand that.
Sheriff?
Yes.
She wants to talk.
Yes, you can, I'll end with this, I want to give you something positive. So recruitment, and this is a direct, you know, credit to all of you in this room. So Governor DeSantis, $5,000 bonus out there for law enforcement officers that move from the other state, we hired 31 people that came to our state right here. First of all, dead man, dead woman, boyfriend, girlfriend came M.I.P.D., they were walking to beat in Brooklyn, guarding the streets, they were sick all the time. They live about two miles over here off Venice Ave, and then ride their bikes to the beach. Every time I see them, they got a smile. So this community supports law enforcement, and I want to say, on behalf of the 1,061 minimum that I represent, and you represent us. I am running for a second term as your sheriff, I'm hoping to be your sheriff. I know currently I have an opponent, but I want to let all of you know that I am laser focused, if we do get an opponent, then I'm prepared to handle my campaign like we did last time, we won every single precinct in this county when I ran in 2020, and we'll do it again. So thank you for allowing me to uphold our conservative values as your sheriff, and I look forward to the term you show up.